Order Monday, November eighth, seven P. M.
David Paradise.
Mr. Moina.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonniewell.
Jared Vogi.
Wayne McCormick.
Uh, invocation?
Uh, let us pray. Lord, your word tells us that from one man, you made all the people on this earth, and that you determined beforehand where and when they would live. Lord, we thank you that in your wisdom, you have given us the opportunity to live here and at this time, and we pray your blessing over our elected leaders tonight. Give them wisdom. May all their decisions be thoughtful, just for the good of your people and holy and righteous in your sight. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Okay, approval of the agenda, but we're going to put under new business, um, the Ugly Bar Liquor License. And so, under the consent agenda, then it'll just be the approval for the other.
The other two locations, um, as well as the current owner of Ugly Bar.
Okay, um, with that changed, do we have an approval of the kit, of the agenda?
I will approve the agenda.
I will second. Further discussion. Mr. Solars. How about yes, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Approval of the consent agenda. So we'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
How about yes, motion passes three zero. Uh, Wright County Sheriff's Office. Uh, does not look like they're here. Um, so we'll move on to city council.
I had the, uh, fire department meeting, city council, and Halloween decorating contest.
Uh, the council meeting and, um, did both days of the Halloween contest judging.
Uh, city council and Halloween decorating contest.
Fire department.
Kevin is gone tonight, so I have it here for you guys. Month of October, total of forty-seven calls. Um, a good number that due to a gas leak order, odor issue, um, which just happened to be too much of the actual, uh, additive put into the gas lines. So, no, no actual gas leaks, which was nice. Um, total calls to date, two hundred and eighty. Uh, they're plus fifty-six on the year. Um, they had staff training, EMS training, and they finished their annual agility test. Um, other things that they had, uh, was fire prevention class with, uh, the kids, and, uh, also the Minnesota Fire Chiefs Conference where, um, Triplett, Markin, Stoll, and Phillips all attended, I believe it was out in Duluth. And, let's see. Just the, uh, call out to the number of record calls, the previous was thirty-eight, just so everybody knows, so they were busy this month. Uh, total number, record number of calls in a twenty-four hour period. Uh, I believe, uh, that was, how many do they have? Didn't say any, oh, nine, nine of them. Um, and then just some acknowledgements from Kevin, uh, to all the firefighters for their hard work and dedication, uh, throughout the busy month, and to the M E S I staff and students for participating in the fire prevention.
Okay, um, the next thing under fire department is the resignation of Mr. Terry Vanderbeek, who served with the Montrose Fire Department for four years, ten months, and three weeks, effective eleven-two, twenty-twenty-one.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Terry Vanderbeek.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion?
Just like to thank him for his time.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote yes, motion passes three zero. Uh, personnel committee.
Um, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, included in your packet for this evening is the updated American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Minnesota Council Number Sixty-Five Agreement. Um, that was agreed upon conditionally in the personnel committee meetings. Um, and then tonight, we would just look for a motion to approve that.
Uh, just kind of the highlights, um.
Yeah, if you want to discuss the changes.
So, we updated, of course, the date, so it'll be effective from January first, twenty-twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And then, um, Christmas Eve and a floating holiday were added to match what the personnel policy states for the city of Montrose. Um, we got rid of some language about, uh, the city clerk treasurer position. Um, and we also, um, there will no longer be a contribution to the HSA of the employees, uh, on a monthly basis, so uh, for single, that was one hundred a month, and families, it was two hundred, so in this particular, um, agreement, it'll be somewhere around forty-eight hundred dollars, I believe, um, in the savings per year, uh, by not adding anything to the HSAs. Um, and then, there's also, excuse me. Uh, there's also an update to the COLA, uh, the cost of living adjustment, which will increase from two percent to two-point-five percent. Um, and this was negotiated down, um. It's about what the average is, um, around everywhere else, they, um. Yeah, the numbers for COLA are anywhere from two-point-nine up to the social security says the COLA is going to be five-point-nine percent for next year. Um, so, it'll be two-point-five percent for the life of this contract. Um, and then, pretty much the big highlights, do you guys have any questions?
I will, uh, make a motion to approve the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Minnesota Council Number Sixty-Five Agreement.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion? All vote yes, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Uh, planning and zoning?
Okay, mayor and council, um, we did not have an October thirteenth planning and zoning meeting, that was canceled. Um, we will be having a public hearing to consider a preliminary plat for the Rolling Meadows addition to be held, um, this Wednesday, November tenth, at seven o'clock, here at the community center. Just wanted to highlight that, and that's all for planning and zoning.
Uh, park and rec. So, the first thing we have is the Halloween decorating contest.
Yep, um, so you guys, the city council completed the judging for the twenty-twenty-one Halloween decorating contest on October twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and ended up with the following three addresses as their favorites. We have photos of the addresses here tonight, so council can make a final vote and pick their favorite of the three finalists. Um, the addresses for those are eleven-oh-nine Fady Circle, five-thirteen Second Street, and three-eleven Center Avenue South. So this is three-eleven Center Avenue South. This one is five-thirteen Second Street, and eleven-oh-nine Fady Circle.
Personally, I like, um. Center Ave. Uh, that one, I had actually got out and walked through it a couple times, and there lots of noises, there are a bunch of things that just jump out at you as you're going through it. Um, I wish I could have seen the kids that had walked through it, because I'm sure that they were all jumping and scared.
Yeah, I had the chance to walk through it on Halloween, too, and it was quite impressive. There was a lot of animatronics, and don't start with me. Um, I do think the other two, um, did really well, too. Um, yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think Center Ave.
Just the sheer amount of time that, uh, they had put in on the one on Fody to hand-make the Headless Horseman.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, with the chicken wire and the.
I believe that's a new resident, and they are very big fans of Halloween.
And, and I, and I can tell all the kids around, I know we talk to them quite extensively. They, this was very minimal to what they're going to be planning to do from future, so.
She was going to put, hopefully, something up for this year, so that's what she got.
I think we have some fun things to look forward to, over the next few Halloweens from that house.
Yeah, that one on, that one on Fody, I mean, to hand-build a Headless Horseman.
Cool.
Out of chicken wire and basically burlap and, and it's dedication, it's a lot of work. And, you know, second is also fabulous, they were all great, I mean, what do we have, fourteen or so?
Yeah, well, it was a fun night to go out there, and the engagement from the community, so thank you to everybody that makes it special for the kids, because that's, that's what it's for, so it's wonderful to see.
It was good to see all of the hunters decorate their houses and yards.
Why you gotta do that to me, man?
Do you want to make a motion to?
I feel, we should leave that to Sam.
And I think we're all pretty split on this, so we're gonna have to kind of come to a consensus on it, but.
Who deserves to win this year?
Like I said, my personal pick is Center Ave, they just, there was so much to theirs, and there was, there's stuff on the ground, and they'd even used one of the little bundles from the construction project to kind of help with theirs as well, so using everything they could.
Yeah, thoroughly enjoyed Center, so that would be my vote.
Well, then I will make a motion that, uh, three-eleven Center Street, or Center Ave South, I believe, uh, is the winner of the twenty-twenty-one Halloween decorating contest.
Yay.
Congratulations. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote yes, motion passes three zero, and congratulations, not just to three-eleven Center Ave, but to everybody who, who went out and did it, so it was, it was not easy to pick a winner, or even narrow it down really to one or two picks.
Definitely wasn't.
Um, Fish Sunflower was on here again, just in case Johnny was able to make it. Um, I had just kind of touched base with him before, and he just wanted to reiterate again that he plans on being back next year. He had mowed the sunflower field down, um, a week or two ago, and that, uh, he said that he's, he's ready to tackle it next year, and hopefully we don't go through a drought that's the worst in like a hundred years, so. Um, so if there's any questions with that, uh, we can reach out to him and email him, so. Uh, city engineer?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, the first item this evening is related to the, uh, regional park and the retaining wall seating landscaping that we discussed at the last meeting. Um, during that last meeting, there was a discussion, uh, ultimately about the, uh, dormant seating or snow seating, uh, of the property on the east side of the fence. Um, also, April and Jim were here, and they talked about, um, not necessarily being in favor of, um, blanket and staples associated with that. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, uh, Tom from Stone's Edge, who is the, um, contractor that we received the quote from that's in your packet, did have the opportunity, uh, to, to speak with April and Jim, and, um, what's been, what's been agreed to, if you will, is Tom was concerned about that erosion, and so it's my understanding that the property owner and Tom discussed putting the blanket down, using the staples, and then Tom will come back and remove those staples, um, once the grass is growing. So, I believe that's the, um, agreement that was reached with Jim and Tom, and, uh, so at this point, I guess ultimately, uh, it's up to council, uh, for direction or authorization to proceed, the quote, had two components. One was for some additional rock and edging, um, on the west side of the fence, and then the second component was the filling of topsoil, seeding, and then, um, preparing that area on the east side of the fence as well. Uh, there is some work to be done in front of the retaining wall yet, that was a part of the original retaining wall project. Ultimately, the contractor, um, would like to do everything at the same time pending, uh, what council authorizes to move forward with, so. With that, I'll answer any questions that council might have.
How soon was he able to get out and do it again?
Uh, I think he's definitely able to do it this year, and it looks like now that the weather's getting to turn, I mean, ultimately, we want to make sure that the air temperature doesn't exceed fifty degrees, because otherwise the seed has a potential of germinating and sprouting, and this time of year, that is definitely not what we want to have happen, so, uh, he's confident he can get that done by the end of the year.
Sorry, we did not communicate that, April. Do we have any more questions for Jared on this? Uh, I will make a motion to approve, uh, the, what is it exactly, the called, the, uh, the winter seating, it's called dormant seating, right? The dormant seating and, uh, God, excuse me, I just got done yelling at fifth graders at basketball practice. Um, the construction and the grading near the wall out at Regional Park, uh, for a total of two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion?
I have one thing just I want to bring up. So since twenty-seventeen, we have now year-to-date estimated of a twenty-five thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents that has been spent on all of these projects. I know that, you know, we, we've done everything we've can, and it keeps, it just keeps going, it keeps adding, it keeps adding, at what point is it enough, in my mind?
Jared, we're, he's confident that this is going to solve any issues that have transpired or that could from leaving it alone, right?
Yeah, that's the solution that's been identified, that, that he feels is most workable for that, so.
So I know this has been an ongoing issue for a while, and, yeah, there's, there's been a lot of money put into it, but just something that I think that we do need to do to take care of this problem, and for once and for all, be, be done with it, and, and make sure that it's taken care of, and Jared and the contractor believe that this will solve the problem, I think that it's a, a good solution to go with, in my opinion.
Absolutely. I'm s- I'm sorry, that's how you think I came off, I'm just trying to figure this all out, since we're trying to be fiscally responsible up here, and we've spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a property, that's all I'm asking. That's, that's not what I'm assuming, I'm just trying to put an end to it all.
Do we have further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
No.
All vote yes, motion passes two-one. Uh, regional park grant.
Mayor and council, the second item in your packets this evening. As you recall, council authorized the submission of a outdoor recreation grant application for the shelter at the regional park. Um, the city staff has been notified that that application was successful. Uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars has been awarded to that, uh, that project for the construction of the shelter. Uh, the grant expiration date is June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, which means the project must be complete, um, so that the grant can be closed out at that time, so the consideration before you this evening is the authorization of plans and specifications to meet that deadline.
Uh, do we know how much of it will be done by, like, the end of next summer by chance? But do they anticipate it, I guess I could word that better, uh, how long do they anticipate it taking to, to do it once it's a go in the spring?
You know, to be honest with you, mayor, at this point, I'd be speculating, because the plans haven't been finalized, and ultimately, and I know we hear this every day on a daily basis, but, um, supply chain issues are, are huge right now. Um, there are projects that I've been involved with, we waited six months for windows, um, so. I think it's realistic that it can be completed by June of twenty-twenty-three.
I appreciate the honesty, I, I was just curious, because I know that they, that that is a, a, a spot for where Montrose Days is going to be moving to, so I was just curious if they, how much would be done if, or, you know, what would be done out there at that point, so. Um, and, yeah, I, I understand the supply chain stuff, and it's only going to get worse, um, from what I've talked to people that are in the trucking industry, so.
So we're looking for a motion, um, to approve you guys going forward with the plans and specs for the shelter? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specs for a shelter out at the regional park.
We're approving authorization to, to, to prepare that, yep.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
How about yes, motion passes three zero.
Thanks, mayor and council, the third item on the agenda, uh, under my items this evening is the final pay estimate for wellhouse number three. Project has been completed. Um, came in approximately nineteen thousand dollars under budget, we've received all the closeout documents from the contractor, lien waivers, um, things of that nature, so at this point, uh, the final pay estimate is before you for approval, um, and acceptance of the project.
I'll make a motion to approve the final pay request of twenty thousand, six hundred and two dollars for the wellhouse number three project.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
How about yes, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, and the final thing I had this evening, um, just a couple updates. The, uh, change order associated with the twenty-twenty street maintenance project, which was essentially the city hall, um, mill and overlay, that project paperwork, the work has been completed, but the project paperwork's being processed, so that'll likely come before you in either December or January for acceptance of that final project. Um, the downtown improvements project essentially is complete for the year twenty-twenty-one, um, with construction resuming in spring. Uh, there was a televising company in town televising some of the sanitary sewer and services. I did receive a call from a resident that a vehicle is parked, um, post-November first on the street overnight, which is obviously a violation of the city's ordinance for on-street parking, or winter parking regulations. Um, but they are done now, and they won't be parking overnight in town anymore, so. With that, mayor and council, I'll, uh, stand for any questions that you might have.
Have they picked up all of the road construction signs that are out for that?
Uh, they have not.
Are they, do we know if they're going to?
Uh, the ones that I no- noticed when I drove through the construction site this evening were, uh, those smaller barricades that look like a A. Um, I believe those are actually the gas companies, and we can certainly contact them about getting that done.
I just wanted to make sure that we could kind of get those moved before snow.
There's some on County Road Twelve, too. I don't know if those are.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow up with them on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jared?
Public Works. Mayor and council, I just have a few things. Skating is all done, ready to go. We put a couple of picnic tables out there for kids to change into their skates. And, uh, we're gonna start getting ready, our, we're getting our snow removal equipment ready, and also getting the Christmas lights ready. Any questions on anything?
Uh, when, when are the guys gonna go out and do the street sweep before the?
We're hoping to start next week. Most of the leaves are down now, and that's all ready to go, too, so.
Any updates on compost? To give to residents right now?
Uh, just said on Thursday's a holiday for the city, and David, you volunteered to run it Thursday afternoon.
I will be there from two to five.
Two to five? And then you're also gonna run it Saturday from?
When do you need me out there? What time?
Ten to two, or ten to one?
Ten to two, it is.
Okay.
I'll give you the key for that.
Sounds good.
Um, anything else, Wayne?
Let you do it unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, there's no old business, um, and then new business, um, we will talk about the Ugly Bar Liquor License. Greg and Sue Anderson. So. Yep, you can come on up.
Good evening. Did you want us to talk about?
Uh, what was the questions that we?
Nothing, we just have to approve their liquor license pending like the sale of the property, so, yeah.
When, uh, when does that actually go through?
Hopefully by the end of the, of the month.
End of the month? Well, congratulations.
It's moving slowly.
Thank you.
Yes.
By the way, I'm Greg Anderson.
Greg and Sue.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. So sometime between the twenty-second and the end of the month.
Okay, awesome. Is this your first bar?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes, yeah. I'm sure our last, but.
That's what they always say.
We've been driving by so many years, uh, from the cabin, and we said, well, you know, we've been looking at it for a long time. Thought it was kind of, talked to Doug and some of the patrons, and and the lady who works with Mike, who had surgery or something, she, she was a good help for us, too.
Awesome, well, I'm preliminary welcome to town.
Yes, yeah.
You have plans to change the name at all?
Nope.
I'm just curious, so I, it's, it's just, it's gone through a lot of name changes over the, the many years, so that's, I was just curious.
Not, not for any reason, but, uh, no, not, everyone seems to, uh.
Probably clean up the face and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering.
No, I think we'll just leave it.
Light it up and.
There we go.
Do some other things and have some more outdoor events and for.
Cool.
Get involved with the. community and so we've been, we're from St. Louis Park and we've been involved in that community for 60 years, so now we've got a new one. So if there's any single, single townhomes or something around, we're probably looking.
Well, they're coming. Thank you and yes, congratulations.
Thank you, yeah.
Did we just give you the form then?
Yep, I can take the form.
Okay.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too, Greg.
So the motion needs to be?
Yep, so you just approved the liquor license pending the sale of the property.
I will make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Ugly Bar under new ownership once the sale is approved.
Second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes three zero.
If she needs anything else, I'll.
Open forum. April?
This is the onset and then here's the issues.
Okay.
Good evening. I just would like to know, what is your plan for next year going forward for the compost? I thought there was going to be some discussion at some point on how you were gonna go forward after this year. Will you be advertising there for a worker or doing something else? It's been asked in town, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
The plan as of now is to look for somebody else to sit out there unless the recommendation from the rest of the council or Wayne is that we want to try opening it back up completely, but I know that's been an issue not just here, but other places around here that have also put in restrictive hours on there. I know there was a sudden loss of when our former employee had stepped down because he had moved out of town, wasn't able to do it anymore. So we're just kind of piecing it together to finish out this year with different council members sitting up there and making sure it's open and then I think we're gonna revisit it once we get through this year and then we're gonna make a plan to advertise probably in the, the, the spring.
Okay. Did you look into like key cards or anything else like other communities have had or are you just set on hiring somebody? I guess was mainly my question. I mean, if there were other options out there, I appreciate you guys going and sitting to keep it open the times that you've been out there now. That's great because it, it happened at a bad time during the year for it to close, but people just kind of want to know what's gonna happen going forward.
I know it's been that we've had some just small talks about putting in key cards and I know it's an expensive system to put in, so we haven't gotten a whole lot of details on that, but it's something that we've had conversations about to look at for the future. But other towns that I've talked to that have looked at it, they said it's not gonna be, it's not cost-effective for what they're doing and it doesn't stop any of the dumping issues that happen as, as well as somebody sitting out there. But I don't think there's a perfect solution, but we're gonna try to come up with the best one to figure it out. But if we do go to a system like that, you guys do have the approval to do all your leave dumping and everything out there.
I wasn't, I wasn't worried about that. I just wanted to bring it up that people are concerned and you haven't talked about it during council meetings, so I thought I'd just bring it up tonight so that it was in your mind on what do we do next year or going forward to find the best possible solution. Because it did really bite and we lost the ability at a crucial time, you know, and it's great that you guys are keeping it open somewhat, but you, it, it's hard for people that work different shifts and stuff, so thank you.
Thanks. Michelle?
Um, I gotta remember what I put on there. Tree lighting. So I'm gonna be doing the tree lighting again this year following our craft event on December 11th that is being put on by the Community Meal Group. So Wayne, right, you're putting the lights over on the tree?
There are, yeah.
And then I'm wondering if maybe we, I can get approval to put extra lights on the other trees that are out in that park. If you guys are able to do that to kind of make it a little more festive since we had COVID last year and it was kind of eh. So I'm looking for approval to add lights into the park. If you guys can, are willing to do that. And then what was the other thing? Oh, park and rec. How is that coming along?
I believe we've only gotten three applications turned in so far, but there are another two or three that are floating out there, so hopefully they turn those in.
And you won't proceed right until you have all five? Okay.
We want to make sure there's five just so that we can have meetings that take place.
Great.
In case people miss.
Meetings can take place with three, just saying. And then I'm glad to see that you guys went out and did the Halloween thing. Can you post the pictures of what you guys went out and?
I'll have Kristy post them tomorrow.
Okay. And then I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Do you guys want to make a motion for the lights or?
Yeah, I mean, can, I mean, is that under Wayne's spending discretion to go out and buy some more colorful lights even? Colorful ones.
Color.
We'll, we'll be able to find plenty of lights and if not, I think I've got a couple boxes. Yeah, I've got a ton too.
I'll make a motion to add more lights to the trees out at Veterans Park for the tree lighting ceremony.
I will second. Further discussion?
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes three zero. Upcoming meetings, no park and rec meeting, planning and zoning and public hearing on Wednesday, November 10th at 7:00 PM. EDA, November 16th, 12:00 PM. City Council Budget Workshop on November 29th, 4:00 PM. And then regular city council meeting. Is that the truth and taxation one as well? I feel like that's.
I believe it was, yep. Yep, we already posted for that.
The regular city council meeting, that's also the truth and taxation. They'll come and ask questions about your taxes in town on December 13th, 7:00 PM. Acknowledgements.
To acknowledge Terry Van Der Beek for his years of service on the fire department?
I wrote it down. You took mine.
I would like to personally acknowledge the Montrose family dinners that are put on by community members here. It's been a wonderful thing to attend a few of those to, to see people and talk to them and it really does bring this community together, so it's something to, to see that's wonderful.
And it's, it's all based off donations too and they, they, they had told me today that they have the next couple that are paid for and, but they're looking for cookers if people have those to donate or purchase, so. I'll just like to recognize, you know, just the, the Grace Place, just in, in general, they, they do a lot around here and I was fortunate enough to, that they needed help this last week with their food distribution and to go out there and see it firsthand, all that they do out there and inside of all the stuff they have going for the, the community is, is just great to see and if people get a chance to go and check it out, they welcome anybody and everybody, so. And with that, if there's no further ones, do we, do you have an update for the Sheriff's Department or no? I was just curious because we, we kind of skipped over it since you weren't here. So if there was anything big you had, we could.
We have the Sheriff's report, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any questions about the Sheriff's Report?
Anything going on that we should know about or?
Well, since I've been here, I'm in the night car. I come in town at eight, so I'll introduce myself into the assembly with the Sheriff's Office. I've been the night car for about a year and some odd months, so nothing glaring that is unusual. So we've been having a lot of car break-ins because people not locking their doors. That's kind of something we typically say. My people lock their doors, I have to bring in your.
Garage door clicker?
Any valuables because of the bus windows and stuff. Montrose hasn't had a whole lot of strings of these break-ins to vehicles, a weirdly has, so I'm looking at like ring cameras and stuff. Looks like kids. I just go and check in door handles for vehicles parked in driveways on the streets. We did have a gun stolen out there from someone who left it in their unlocked car, so I just gotta remind everyone to lock their doors for their cars, lock their house doors, garage doors, make sure they're in security and take precautions that way. We have had a string of graffiti in some of the parks. I don't know if you saw it in the Sheriff's Report, so we've been providing some patrol just driving through, make sure there aren't kids with backpacks front of me from us when they drive in there. If anyone is suspicious and you want to, so talk to them. So that's, that's really all I have. Any questions? Anything that I can answer? Any complaints? Thanks for your service.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for putting you on the spot like that.
You're good.
All right. Sure, absolutely.
It's for you. So I do want to acknowledge Kirby for going out and doing the compost area and then David too for doing that. Like, like she said, it's much appreciated and you're gonna be open again on Thursday, right? Is that advertised at all?
We will.
We just figured it out before the meeting.
Yeah, we just decided that, yeah.
Okay, I'm actually home. I'll use it Thursday, so thank you guys both for doing that.
Absolutely.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes. We're adjourned.